All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the August 2nd, 2021 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verchay.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kuvall.
Here.
Okay, our management consultant, Steve Golden, will not be with us this evening, so he is excused. We do not have a business promotion tonight. The young lady from the American Italian Cultural Society was unable to be here. We will talk more about the Italian Club Festival coming up here in mid-August, a little later on in the report. And as long as I have everyone's attention, and as long as we have such a fantastic group here tonight, I would like to make an announcement that, beginning tomorrow, the city of Crest Hill, here at City Hall, will encourage, we encourage, all people that come into this building to wear their mask. I also encourage, I encourage very much, anyone who is not vaccinated, watching us on television throughout the city of Crest Hill, please, for public safety, wear your mask and please get vaccinated. I believe that all of us encourage everyone to be vaccinated so we can slow down the spread of this virus, that it seems like it's taking off now, and it may even be worse than what we had to go through last year. So I think it's necessary that we take all the proper precautions to try to do everything we can to try to slow it down and to be rid of it. And the only way that that, in my opinion, is going to work is if we can get most of the population vaccinated. So with that being said, we have several special guests here this evening for the honor of a promotion of one of our police officers to deputy chief. With that, I would like to turn it over to our police chief, Ed Clark.
Evening, Mayor and Council. First thing I have on the agenda before the ceremony is an ordinance I have before you. It sets the salary for the position of deputy chief of police for the city for this particular appointment. We discussed it at works at executive session, and I would like to present that to you this evening and seek your approval.
So move, Mayor, so move.
Are we, a motion by Alderman, who was it? Albert? Seconded by Alderman versus Dyke? For the creation of an ordinance setting the salary for the position of deputy chief of police for the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? We did discuss this last week at our work session held last Monday evening. No questions, roll call, please.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, ordinance 1117.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's a special occasion. We'll be promoting and appointing Sergeant Jason Opiola to the position of deputy chief. I wanted to first give a rundown on Sergeant Opiola and his career. He started in 2001, came from the City of Lansing Police Department. He's worked in patrol, he was a firearms instructor, use of force instructor, member of the Joliet Special Operations Division Squad. He's worked on major cases, several major cases, and has been a member of the Major Crimes Task Force since 2010. Jason is currently a division commander for the task force. He was promoted, ranked a sergeant in 2017, and assigned to investigations as of this date. He currently reviews all our police reports for our department. He's also an instructor for Tri River, which is our local training unit, and teaches basic and advanced criminal sexual assault investigation courses. He's recently earned his master's degree from University of Cincinnati in 2020. His family is here to support him this evening, and I'm very confident that Deputy Chief Opiola will serve the department and community well, and I'm proud to appoint him this evening. Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to use family? Okay, I'll need you to raise your hand and please repeat after me. I, and then please state your name.
I, Jason Opiola.
Have been appointed to the office of deputy police chief.
Have been appointed to the office of deputy police chief.
In the city of Crest Hill.
In the city of Crest Hill.
In the county of Will.
In the county of Will.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I, that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of deputy police chief.
The duties of the office of deputy police chief.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I can't say how honored I am, how proud I am to work for a city council and a mayor that supports the police work that we do. Been there close to 20 years now, and I put a lot of my heart and soul into this department as a police officer, as an investigator, as a sergeant, and I look forward to serving as a deputy chief. I just want to keep this short and brief, but there's a few people I have to thank. My family, my mom, my dad, my brothers and my sisters, for being here. All the youth, fine officers that I get to work with on a daily basis. Not everybody gets to see the work they do all the time, and how proud I am to work alongside some of the best men and women in this county, some of the best police officers. This city should be proud of this department. To my son Nathan Braden, my wife Denise, for supporting me through all these years. I'm so proud of the people, the men you're becoming. And my wife, I could not do this without her. Her support over these years through the night, the call-outs, through the hard nights of dealing with cases that sometimes are very difficult to deal with. She's been there. I could not do this without her, thank you. To Ed, thank you for having faith in me to lead this department. I really appreciate that. I wanted to thank some of my partners in the past in investigations, in my investigations unit, who have made my career for me. I could not have been in this position without learning from them. I hope they understand, and I hope you all understand how much I'm proud to work alongside you. Thank you very much.
That's quite an impressive resume that you have built over the years at the city of Crest Hill. It's also a testament of all of the family members, all of the police officers and their spouses that are here tonight, to congratulate you and to stand beside you as you take this next step in your career. To your sons, Nathan and Braden, Braden, right? I hope that you are very proud of both of your parents, your father and your mother, because it looks like they have done a fantastic job in raising you. To your wife Denise, I want to congratulate you, and I also want to thank you for all the sacrifices that you as a family had to make, to the extra hours, the late-night hours, the days that he's gone. But I will tell you that he has improved the quality of life for every resident in the city of Crest Hill for what he has done for the past several years here. So I want to wish everybody congratulations from the city council, myself, all the residents of the city of Crest Hill. I personally am very, very proud of you. We've had a lot of long conversations, and you're a great White Sox fan, so that makes you even better. But I will tell you this, that I know that you are going to do a fantastic job for this city for years to come, and I want to congratulate you and tell you how proud I am of you.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Anyone from city council like to make any comments?
I'd like to start off then, congratulations, and many more years of duty to the city and yourself and your family. Congratulations.
Congratulations on this big night for yourself. It's been a long time coming. I'm sure, you know, it's finally a relief that you finally made it. We're glad you're with our department, that you represent the city of Crest Hill, and I know you got many more years ahead of you. I can see by the support of all the officers here that we made a good choice, that Ed made a good choice, and we're looking forward to all those future years with our department. Thank you again for all you do for the city.
I'd like to say congratulations to you as well. I'm one of the newest members on the council, but I believe in the chief and I trust his decisions, and I think he made a very good decision. Just looking at you and the support you have with your fellow officers and your family and friends, that gives me a lot of encouragement that we're on the right track.
Congratulations, well deserved. I'm really happy that you were chosen for this position. I know you're gonna do great. It's not easy to be a policeman in today's world, so thank you to you and to all of your police department, and I look forward to work with you, and get ready for the phone calls.
Congratulations, you and I have about the same tenure here with the city, so we've been here a long time, both of us, so I hope things work out really well for you. I hope your role is as good for you as it will be for us, okay?
Congratulations, Jason. 20 years, I don't believe it, you barely look 20 years old or something. But in all seriousness, congratulations, and thank you for all you've been doing, and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
Jason, I know you're gonna do awesome. You've represented the city well, you will continue to do that. Looking forward to the next 20-plus years with the department.
Great job, Jason, and just thank you for your service.
Anyone else? The dius? Anybody from the family? Gentlemen? Denise? Dad, come on up, Dad. This is Jason's dad, Ray. Great name.
I'm just so proud of him, and he really did a good job, and we all worry about him all the time, but I know he does a real good job on this, and we're just proud.
Anybody else from the family? Anybody? Come on, Nathan, it's all yours.
I'd like to thank my dad for all the times. He's been busy as heck. He's always helped me with sports and school, even when I'm, even when I'm struggling, even when he's struggling. I just like to thank him, and I love him so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the family? Any of the many police officers that we have here, would anyone like to make any comments?
Yeah, he's stubborn, so he's perfect. Y'all gotta pick the good ones. Yeah.
All right, well, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
All right. Okay, back to the items on the agenda, first of all. I ask for the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on July 19th to 2021. Motion would be in order.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on July 19th, 2021. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And you have before you the minutes of the work session held on July 26, 2021. Motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Jefferson. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, our city attorney, Mike Stiff, is here tonight. We have no agenda items. Mike, do you have any comments?
Okay, our management consultant is not with us this evening, so we will skip down to our public works department, our director of public works, Mr. Mark Seifert. Good evening, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our city engineer, Ron Wedeman, will take the first agenda item.
Thank you. The first item was for the approval and execution by the mayor of change order two for the salt building, as previously discussed.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert, for the approval of an execution by the mayor of the change order number two in regards to the salt building. Questions or comments? We did discuss this last Monday night also. Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
The second item on the agenda is the mailbox damage ordinance. A couple changes were made after council comments last week. The first change is that posts with multiple bit mailboxes will be paid out as follows. Two mailboxes would be $150, three would be $175, four or more would be $200. The second change is asked to be changed by council was that the city will, if requested, place a temporary mailbox at the residence until April 15th. We did not, we toyed around with some weather determinations and if-then's, but at the end of the day, we just decided, let's stick with the day that everyone knows it's tax day, so we'll keep it out there until tax day. So with that, I would be asking for approval of this motion for the mailbox damage ordinance as previously discussed at the work session last week.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Albert, for the ordinance adding Chapter 12-36 mailboxes to Title 12 of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances. Questions or comments?
Well, thank you, Mark, for updating on the multiple mailboxes, because I know that's gonna affect a lot of people. I appreciate your efforts on that, that was needed, thank you.
Hi, we, after you come back from vacation, are you able to post this on the website and Facebook to start educating and notifying the resident about the changes?
Yep. Our plan is September 1st to start kind of blitzing it out there, so people have a month before we even start going and looking at mailboxes.
And can we add it on a water bill as well, the next one, that is coming up after this one in two months?
Yes, it would be in a couple of months, it'll be right around the same time we're sending letters out, so we'll do a double blitz there. Yeah, we can.
Thank you, and good job.
Roll call, please.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
No.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 1118.
That is all Public Works has on the agenda tonight, but we'd be happy answering questions you may have.
Any questions of Public Works? Okay, thanks, Mark. Moving on, Community Development Department, we do not have any agenda items this evening. Maura will be here tomorrow. If you have any questions. Police Department, Chief Ed Clark, Ed, anything else you'd like to add?
I don't have anything else on the agenda this evening.
Any questions for the police chief?
Nope.
Okay, great report. All right, moving on to the mayor's report. First order of business is an ordinance amending Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 26, a finance supervisor of the city of Crest Hill, with the changes that you have before you, now for the title of Finance Director. And also, it was brought to my attention by our treasurer that two duties were left off of this sheet, so I would like whoever makes the motion in a second to add the oversight of the property tax rebate check to the list of duties and responsibilities, and also the oversight of the GFOA, part of the audit, to be added to the list of duties and responsibilities of our new finance director.
Excuse me, could we also add the preparation and submission of the tax levy?
Okay, and in regards to the tax levy also. So I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second, sorry.
We have a motion by Alderperson.
With the addition of the tax levy, the oversight of the tax rebate and the GFOA, and the tax levy, did I say that?
Yes.
Okay, with those additions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, ordinance 1119.
Okay, with that done, next order of business on the agenda is the appointment of a Finance Director. I would like to advise our residents that this was a lengthy process that we have gone through, but I believe that we have the right choice to be our next Finance Director in the city of Crest Hill. Her name is Lisa Banavitz. She has a very impressive resume, which includes, which she is a CPA and does have her master's degree also, and I will tell you that she, her most recent position is with the Joliet Park District, but she comes with some high credentials of both schools and government entities that she is going to bring to the city of Crest Hill here. I will tell you that during her interview, she was very positive, very confident, well-spoken, and I believe that she is the right choice for the appointment of our Finance Director for the city of Crest Hill. With that, I would ask for a motion for the approval of Lisa Banavitz to begin with the city of Crest Hill.
So move.
After she advises of her intentions of a notice to her current employer, which will probably be, I would think, around two weeks, somewhere in the middle of August. Her starting salary would be $130,000 for the position. Questions or, or motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Abstain.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, with that, I would like to introduce Lisa Banavitz, please to the podium, Lisa, if you'd like to make any comments in regards to the appointment. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, and I'm sorry for the vacancy of all my friends. So I just wrote something brief, but I'm thrilled to be invited to become a member of the city of Crest Hill family. I'm looking forward to working with the administration, city council, community members, combining our collective experience, knowledge, and vision to continually improve the services for the community. I can't wait to get started in this position, and thank you all for welcoming into your family. I'm very excited.
And welcome to the city of Crest Hill. I know you're gonna do a fantastic job.
I'm gonna work so hard.
I have high aspirations, I have high aspirations for you, you know, but I believe that you're gonna be able to hit the ground running here, and I think it's gonna be a great fit. So I look forward to working with you for many years to come.
Me too, thank you so much, everyone.
Any comments from city council?
Well, I'd like to say welcome, and make sure you bring those sharp pencils with you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And those glasses, and keep up the same good work.
Absolutely.
Welcome and congratulations, and can you start tomorrow?
I'm gonna start on the 16th, it's my tentative day, so that's less than two weeks, but yeah, tomorrow will be rough, but I can't wait to get started.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're many, many years, dear.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome to the city of Crest Hill, and hopefully you're here for many years to come. You have a long career here with us.
I think I have 20 years till I retire, so.
Well, hopefully you'll be with us till you retire.
Absolutely. It's my intention.
I'd like to say welcome, and I think you're a welcome addition to the city of Crest Hill, and if you got 20 years, then you and Jason will be around together.
He's only 20 years younger than me, but yeah, that's why.
They get to retire early.
Congratulations, and welcome to the city of Crest Hill.
Thank you.
Welcome, Maura, Lisa.
Thank you.
Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I really look forward to starting, so.
I will touch base with you tomorrow.
Absolutely.
And hope everything goes well.
Thank you, I appreciate everything, thank you.
All right, you have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Can I just thank Glenn for his contributions to this, things he noticed, and why it's very important for him to be involved, I guess, is that he knows things we don't know. So thank you, Glenn.
Thank you all.
Okay, good night, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Lockport Township Fire Department's signed permit waiver. They want to install a new electronic sign at Station 2, which is at the corner of Root Street and Weber Road. They are asking for a waiver of the signed permit of $80 for the construction of the new sign.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Who made the motion? We have a motion by Alderman Sapiti, I heard a lot of motions, seconded by Alderman Albert. Questions or comments in regards to the permit waiver? Roll call, please.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verchay.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, that's all the agenda items for the mayor. If there are any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them. Hearing none, we will move on to the city clerk's report, our city clerk, Christine Verchay Hall.
Thank you, and I have nothing to report tonight.
Any questions of city clerk? All right, great report also, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. City treasurer's report, our treasurer, Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from July 5th through July 18th of 2021 in the amount of $233,688.14. I'll also report that, missed the agenda, it's not an action item, but wasn't listed for our comp time buyback, that was in the amount of $35,662.1. The only item I seek approval on is for, or an action and approval on, is our list The only item I seek approval on is for, or an action and approval on is our list of bills which during that same timeframe totaled $1,042,363.40.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Sepiti in regards to the list of bills, questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
I thank you all, if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions of our city treasurer?
Thank you, and good night.
Thanks, Glenn. Moving on, unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda, anyone? New business, we have plant commission recommendation, an ordinance establishing a MAP amendment to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the application of the, of Crest Hill to rezone state-built property. You have information in your packet in regards to this plant commission recommendation. I am going to turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Mike Stiff, for some opening comments in regards to this request. Mike?
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. This, my understanding predates me a little bit, that it's been sort of in the talks for a couple of years now, but basically this is to rezone the property. It's approximately 195 acres, I believe, 196.55 acres at the southeast corner of Weber and Division. So it's currently state-built property. It is a situation where the state basically said that they didn't really have any problems with this rezoning, and it's a rezoning from M1 to B1, and this was at the city's application. So we can institute a request for a MAP amendment, we presented to the, the plant commission, and on a unanimous vote, with no objection from anybody from the state, no participation by anybody from the state, no objection from any property owners after notifying everybody per the statutes, it was a unanimous finding and decision of the plant commission to recommend to the city council that the property be rezoned from M1 to B1. There's currently no development proposals for this property, but this is more in line with the current comprehensive plan, and I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions.
Any questions from city council to the city attorney?
Now, let me ask you a question. Say state, say state wants to rezone that for something else, we'll have to go along with that, then, wouldn't we?
They could petition, just like the city petitioned, but still have to go back before the plant commission for a recommendation, and then it would come back to you again for a MAP amendment rezoning, and it would be your ultimate say-so.
Okay, that's all I want to know, then. Okay, thanks.
We'll have to ask questions.
Okay. Any other questions from city council? Our lobbyist, Brent Hasser, is here also. If any questions to Mike Stiff or to Brent Hasser from city council.
I think the whole intention, Mayor, just maybe for the public's knowledge, I didn't see the plant commission meeting, was the fact that with an M1 zoning that has a, you know, more of a use of industrial or trucking and stuff like that, where a business zoning is more aligned with our comprehensive plan for commercial development. So, I'm excited about it.
That is correct.
And I can say that there were a couple of people that were here for a different agenda item who did step up and say, the question was exactly that, is, is there going to be a truck terminal going in there? And the answer from staff and obviously from the plant commission was that, you know, the, the B1 zoning is going to be something that's not going to be a truck terminal because the, the main concern from the residents was noise, you know, along the road, people from the subdivision across the street, so.
And I agree with that with the plant commission because there were few people from, from Ward 2 that they had the same concerns, but after understanding the whole concept of the, of the plan and the zoning, they were okay with it, so.
Correct, and, and this is certainly in the best interest of the city of Crest Hill to rezone this property, this just under 200 acres on Division and Weber Street. This is, this is in the best interest of all the residents of the city of Crest Hill to rezone this property. It would also make it probably more marketable and more conducive to what we would like to see there per our comprehensive plan on that property also. Any last questions from city council in regards to this case? If not, I would ask if anyone from the audience would like to speak for or against the case RZ-21-3-7-2, the applicant is the city of Crest Hill, for the rezoning of the property at the southeast corner of Division and Weber Road from M1 to B1. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. The second request, if anyone would like to speak for or against case RZ-21-3-7-2, the application of the city of Crest Hill for the rezoning of the property at the southeast corner of Division and Weber Road from M1 to B1. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and your address is optional. And the third request, if anyone would like to speak for or against case RZ-21-3-7-2, the applicant, city of Crest Hill, for the property located at the southeast corner of Division and Weber Road. The present zoning is M1, the zoning change requested is to B1. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To the city council, since everything has been discussed, all the questions answered, you have before you an ordinance establishing a MAP amendment to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the application of Crest Hill to rezone state-built property. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson. Questions or comments in regards to the motion for the rezoning? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, and ordinance is actually 1870. We do have a little error, I just saw, I gave you wrong numbers. For the salary for the deputy is actually ordinance 1867. The ordinance for the mailbox is 1868, and the ordinance that was 1119 is actually 1869.
Okay. Okay. So that motion did pass?
Yes.
So I thank everyone for their input into this. There are no other agenda items from plant commission on the agenda, and we already took care of the swearing-in of the new deputy chief, Jason O'Peola.
Mayor.
Yes.
Are, are we tabling the other plant commission recommendations, or?
No, we're not tabling them. At the request, both, both of the other agenda items, 1610 Marlboro Lane, and also the request from the northwest corner of Division and Weber will be discussed at next Monday evening's city council work session.
So then do we still have to table it, though, because it's on the agenda for tonight, or?
It's not on the agenda tonight. The information was just given in your packet as informational.
Got you. I was looking at the plant commission record, agenda, sorry about that.
Okay. All right. Committee liaison reports. Anyone? City council comments, positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? Alderman Dyke?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Verche?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alderwoman Gazal?
Just want to announce that we will be having our second, let's meet at the park this year. It will be held this coming Wednesday at 6:00 PM, from 6:00 to 7:30. The police department will be there, see him or the dog, come and see him. We'll be handing out, kids handouts, public works trucks will be there, the kids get to enjoy, enjoy them, also fire department. This event will be held at the Park of Borio, closer to the Fields of Long Meadow. Again, this coming Wednesday, come meet us at the park, we can chat, we can exchange ideas, and we'll enjoy the time with, with your elected officials and your police department and your public works. And I want to thank you, Mark, for taking care of all the details and having everything ready, and I want to thank you, Ed, for continuing supporting this event for community reach out to the community. Thank you.
Word three, Alderperson Oberlin.
Well, I want to welcome our two new employees we hired tonight, and our new deputy chief, I'd like to welcome him again and congratulate all three of them.
Alderman Sepiti?
Nothing at this time.
Word four, Alderman Albert?
Mayor, just make another announcement about the Crest Hill Lions Club luau, which will be held at St. Charles Park on Sunday, September 5th, from noon to 10:00 PM. It's a, you know, a family-oriented picnic with a car show and food and music should be, should be a good time, and bingo, should be a good time. Thanks.
Alderman Kubal?
Nothing else to add, Mayor.
Okay. Public comment, anyone would like to address city council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional.
What was that?
Public comments, anyone would like to make public comment, please step to the podium? Pardon me?
Yes.
Anything?
Yes.
Yes, you can make your comments at the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional.
My name's Rick Walkie, if you don't know it, 1925 Kelly Avenue. Are you the person that told the cops that I was driving around the building down there on Oakland?
Make your comments to this table, Mr. Walkie.
I asked, right there.
I'm asking you to make your comments to this table. This is public comment, your opportunity to make public comment.
What I'm making is a public comment.
You're asking a question, make public comment.
Yes, that's exactly right, you get an answer.
Make public comment to this dais.
I want an answer.
Make a comment to this dais.
What kind of comment do you want? You're an idiot? Is that, is that sufficient? Or you want me to start to go around the whole place?
I want you to act respectful at that podium, and I ask whatever comment.
I don't have any respect for you because you're nothing but a pig.
Wow.
Quite a comment.
You're a low-life coward.
All right, you're out of order, you are out of order, I gave you an opportunity, please sit down. Mr. Walkie, I am being respectful to you, you, I gave you an opportunity, please sit down.
Are you the god here?
I'm not the god. I am far from the god.
You pray the god, don't you?
You're done, Mr. Walkie, please be seated.
I got you.